Good evening and welcome to the December 21st, 2023 meeting of the Town of Southampton Zoning Board of Appeals. This meeting is being held live and also via video conferencing in accordance with the Town Board's enactment of Local Law Number 14 of 2022. Our next meeting and those following also will be held in person here at Town Hall and will continue to allow for remote participation, so please keep checking the Town's website for updates and any new information. If you wish to view tonight's live meeting only and not participate, please do not join the Zoom meeting and instead go to the Town's website for viewing access. With that, I'd like you to join me in the Pledge of Allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic which stands one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
For those of you here with us tonight, in case of an emergency evacuation, please exit through the rear doors of this room to one of the staircases across the hall and continue downstairs and out through the main entrance. Do not attempt to use the elevators during an emergency evacuation. In case of a medical emergency, the automated external defibrillator and first aid kit are both located in the hallway on this floor opposite the elevator. Restrooms are located across the hall from this room. We will begin this meeting with public hearings. We have applicants and members of the public here with us live and also standing by via Zoom webinar, which is being moderated by CTV. CTV will mute the speakers on Zoom until it is their time to give testimony before the Board. Please be patient. If you find that you're having difficulties accessing the hearing, visit the Town Clerk's meeting portal and click on the instructions link. Also, for those of you in this boardroom, please silence your cell phones and refrain from speaking to one another as it interferes with the recordings of our proceedings. Tonight, Board Member Helen Burgess is participating via Zoom. A reminder that applicants, agents, and members of the public speaking other than attorneys will be sworn in, will state their address for the record and will offer their testimony as it relates to the application before the Board. In order to consider properly every application before us tonight, individuals commenting on a particular application have a time limit of three minutes. Also, before handing in any submissions to the Board tonight, please make sure that documents identify the ZBA application name and tax map number. The application name should also be written on your certified receipts. Unless otherwise stated at the end of an individual application hearing, all applications will remain open for written comments for all purposes until a set date. Those written comments can be addressed to the members of the Board and sent via email, mail, and/or dropped off at Town Hall to the Town Secretary Candace Powell. At this time, I would like to take a motion to approve the minutes of our December 7th meeting.
Motion to approve.
Second. Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Meetings are approved. Keith, would you take us through the agenda?
Okay, some changes to the agenda. First item is going to be the SECA Lead Agency Resolution, John T. Monticabo et al. We're going to move to adjourn to our 118 meeting. Second.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
And the decision count, I'm going to move that we reopen Florence Goldsmith to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Now, I'll move to close it with a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
All right, as far as the following decisions will be adjourned to our 1424 meeting. That's April Suarez, Renette Riley, Stephen and Melissa Lesser, no, Virginia Daley and James Daley.
Second. I thought that's more.
16 Indian Avenue LLC, Roberto Camming, J-10 Properties, Del Patel, Eric Belfi, Erin Appel, Alexander Viman and Production Holdings LLC.
Second.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Motion carries.
All right. I did that.
Reopen it? No.
Lesser, we have to do.
Yeah, Stephen and Melissa Lesser, I'm going to move to reopen that to be able to accept written submissions.
Second.
Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
Okay, that being done, I'll make a motion to close with a determination later this evening.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Motion carries.
Okay, as far as Matthew Frank, that's going to be adjourned to our 118 meeting.
Second.
Mr. Tuttill. Oh, we got another one.
That's another one.
Mark Smith and Heather Cole, the same, adjourned to our 118 meeting.
Second.
Okay, Mr. Tuttill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye.
I believe I got it all. If anybody else has anything else.
No, I think you got it all.
That's it.
Okay, back to the beginning of the agenda.
Let's do it.
Item one, Sean Daniel Cassidy and Jerry Johnson Logue as trustees of the Jerry Logue and Sean Cassidy Living Trust dated 7/21/1941 Wickatuck Drive, New York, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-15-2-55. Advocate in cross relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a two-story addition to an existing dwelling on a non-conforming lot. 330-84D Pyramid Height for a total pyramid encroachment of 1,677 cubic feet, existing encroachment of 105 cubic feet on east side and 46 cubic feet on the west side. For a deck over a existing garage, 330-84D Pyramid Height for an encroachment, for a total pyramid encroachment in the amount of 1,530 cubic feet, existing encroachment of 650 cubic feet. And two, 330-83A4 yards to allow a deck either one foot above ground level to be located in the required front yard. And three, 330-94 schedule of off-street parking space requirements for residential uses for one parking spot, space where a minimum of three spaces is required and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction. Can you pass that to Mike?
Thank you.
Lori, can you take one?
Do you swear to tell the truth, the whole truth, and nothing but the truth?
I do.
Okay, please state your name and address.
This is Lori Wilk with the Land Planning Services, Representative Cassidy and Logue. My address is 231 Cantico Road in East.
Thank you. Okay, tell us about the application.
So this application is to build a second story addition to an existing house. The existing house already exceeds pyramid, and the additional relief is due to the fact that the house does not align with the side yard property lines, as can be seen on the survey last revised by Gary Benz on June 28th of 2023. So if you look at the survey itself, you'll see that the house is not aligned and it is skewed, and that is where the pyramid relief for the second story, it's really a one-half story addition. It's more like a dormer addition, not a full set, two-story. But because it's not aligned, there's an encroachment, a further encroachment into the pyramid. We also seek pyramid relief to legalize the roof, deck, and railing above the existing garage. Both actions require pyramid relief due to the narrow 50-foot wide lot width at the street. It should be noted that the garage was built at the front property line pursuant to a 1959 variance, a copy which is attached to the packet I gave you. It should also be noted that the deck and railing existed on the garage when the applicants bought the property and was repaired as needed. And I'm going to read a statement from the applicants for the record, which you have also in your packet. We're sorry to miss the meeting for the applicant, for our application for variances. We wanted to be there, however, we had to travel, we had travel plans to visit family for the holidays and were not able to reschedule our flights without hefty change fees. We purchased 41 Wickatuck in February 2023. The garage is reflected on the COs. The garage roof deck existed when we purchased the house, however, the garage roof and roof deck and railing were in disrepair and dangerous. An inspection confirmed the hazardous conditions. Attached, please find the home inspection report, which is actually not attached, conducted by Beren's Home Inspections, 360 Degrees, stating, quote, "Roof is unsafe to walk on, leaking, damaged, rotten. It needs replacing now," end quote. Additionally, the insurance company would not insure the property unless we had the garage roof and roof deck repaired. We had to submit pictures showing the repairs, and I've also attached those to your packet. I've shown you a picture of the finished product when they did the repairs, but I also show you the condition of it when it was first, unsafe, leaking, and rotten, and then, there's two pages of that pretty much. So, before hiring the contractor, we called the town and spoke to a building inspector who told us that a building permit was required, but most people repair roofs and then apply for a permit to repair when complete. With this information and the liability the roof and deck presented, we rushed to hire a contractor to make the necessary repairs before anyone was injured. Unfortunately, a stop work order was issued on April of 2023. Immediately, we applied for a building permit. We were then told that a variance was required. The property is vertical and tiered. One has to climb steps to get to the house. Given how the garage and deck were constructed decades ago, the garage roof surface is at ground level with the upper level of the property. With architectural plans, we believe that the roof, interior support, and roof deck would be built to code and would no longer be dangerous or hazardous. We appreciate if you would approve the variances. Thank you and happy holidays. So, there's also a safety issue with regard to this deck and railing. The garage is nearly a flat roof. It sits eight feet tall at the front property line. So it's basically built into an embankment. The property goes like this, the garage goes like this. And it was a flat roof that walked straight out to the front, and there's an eight-foot drop. There has to be a railing. There has to be, I mean, they had to repair it, obviously, but there has to be a railing for safety purposes. The railing and the deck are what are actually, what we're here for really for. The garage itself predates zoning, well, has a variance on that, and does not need any relief. So, we also need relief as the deck sits more than one feet above grade in the required front yard and relief for one parking space where a minimum of three is required. Now, the garage provides one space on the property, but the garage sits 17 feet back from the paved right-of-way, and as you can see on the survey, that allows at least three cars to park head in off the street. They actually have a gravel area between the garage itself and the edge of pavement, and there's at least room for maybe even four cars.
Who owns that property? It's not the property owner.
It's, no, it's in the right-of-way.
It's in the right-of-way.
But it's not.
They can park in the right-of-way.
But it's not on the pave, in the paved area. And I noticed driving around this area that a lot of people park in the right-of-way. It just seems to be, and they also seem to have a lot of very narrow, long lots. With regard to the pyramid relief for the second story addition to the existing home, we note that 52 Wickatuck was granted 4,036 cubic feet of relief, 50 Wickatuck, Wickatuck saw 4,650 cubic feet of relief, 17 Wickatuck saw 1,212 cubic feet of relief, and six Wickatuck, an unknown amount of pyramid relief was granted for a second story addition. All of these lots are long and narrow as well. This shows that the relief requested is compatible with the neighborhood and will not cause an undesirable change. There is no environmental impact from the proposal. The hardship is not self-created, as they cannot construct a second story or legalize the garage deck and railing without relief due to the lack of lot width and the garage's position on the front property line. And although this may be a self-created hardship, clearly with the lack of lot width and the precedent in the area, there's no reason that the variances should be denied.
Is it a one, is it a one-story addition or a two-story addition?
So it's a half-story addition. It's presently a one-story house, and they're dormering it up in the middle of the roof line. You can see the gray area on the survey is where the addition is proposed. So you'd call it a second story, but it's really going to be a one-and-a-half story dwelling when it's done.
Wait, I'm confused. I'm very confused about this. So the, on the, on this survey, it says existing one-story frame.
Correct.
And then there's the gray area.
Yes.
It says proposed one-story addition. Is there?
Proposed second-story addition.
No, it says proposed one-story addition. So is that the second story?
Oh, no, we don't need relief for the proposed one-story addition.
Well, where are you talking about?
So the gray area on top of the larger house.
Oh, all right, okay. So in the middle, so there's a white.
Second story, I see where it's at.
Yeah, it's a small note that says proposed second-story addition.
Okay. It's very hard to see it, it's so tiny.
Yes, agreed.
We don't have one this size?
I don't know, maybe I do. And the deck that you're talking about is the proposed deck between the garage and the, and the dwelling?
No, it is the deck and railing on top of the garage. It is this deck and railing here.
Yeah.
There's the, there's the legal garage that was there when they got the variance for.
Okay.
This is where you have an eight-feet drop.
Okay.
This deck and railing were there and in disrepair when my clients bought the property. The relief we need is only for this deck and railing, because this is actually the front yard line right here, and we encroach into it.
So that's the decking that you're talking about?
Correct.
It's very unclear in the, in the description. Let me see what it says.
This, this zoning board application is very buzzy. So what are these dates? October 5, 19, is that 1959?
Correct.
1960?
Correct.
Okay.
And a garage on the front of the property line.
So this pre-existed the pyramid law?
Yes.
By many years?
Yes.
Okay.
But there is, we did include, there's an existing encroachment there, but we didn't need a variance for it.
Exactly.
Yep.
So you've got a legal garage.
Yes.
You now have a pyramid law issue because of the advent of the pyramid law.
And because of the deck and the railing on top.
And the deck and the railing creates.
Which we, looking at aerials, it's been there for a really long time. It's not mentioned on any of the COs.
Well, it doesn't seem as though removing the railing is going to change your pyramid issue.
No, and it's not.
Exactly.
It's going to certainly create a safety issue.
And creates a safety issue.
Yes. So, like I said.
I'd also like to see.
We are 17 feet back from the right-of-way, so this is not towering over the road.
I'd like to see a, are they going to replace the railing? Is that the railing that's going to be?
It's already been done.
It's already been done.
The work's been done. They got a stop work order.
Okay.
It's all been taken care of, because they couldn't get insurance for the house when they bought it, because it was in such disrepair.
Right.
And there's a, there's a proposed encroachment of 1530 cubic feet, is that correct? Where the existing encroachment is 650. Why is there such a big, big addition? See what I, see what I'm looking on?
I do, I do. I'm really not sure where the existing 650 even came from, because it's not really something we needed to get in the first place.
It's not like you're building on that portion of the, of the building. You're not, you're not building onto the garage.
No.
So there was, so, yeah, I don't understand why it says there's an existing.
Yeah, it says existing, so to me, that's like.
It is, the proposed should be the existing.
The architect put it on the plans, but it doesn't, it's not really relevant.
Right.
Because we never needed a variance when the garage was built.
So really, it's just, the existing pyramid encroachment is 1530 cubic square.
1530, right.
Correct.
Okay.
That is exactly right.
Okay. Was, was there, John, are you finished?
Oh, yes.
Okay. Was there an existing deck on top of that garage?
This is where there's confusion. So, if you look at aerial photographs, it appears that there was. If you look at the inspection report and the pictures I show you and the rot of that deck and roof and railing, it's been there a very long time, and it needed to be repaired, as I said, because the inspection and the insurance companies would not insure this house without that being repaired.
Right.
So, in that state of disrepair implies it's been there a very long time.
The garage or the deck?
The deck and the railing. The garage certainly since 1960.
Right.
But the railing and, the railing and the deck, can't give you a date. It disappears as blurry as you go back in aerial, but it still appears to be there as far back as I can see. That doesn't mean it ever had a permit. I don't know. That's why we're here. So we're going to have to get a permit for it, obviously.
Yeah, but it does, it seems de minimis in comparison to the entirety of the pyramid encroachment for that whole garage.
Right, exactly.
Yeah, the railing just doesn't seem to.
But I don't know how de minimis, did I say that right? Yeah, I don't know how de minimis it is if there was an existing pyramid of 650 and now a proposed pyramid. We need some clarity on that, of 1530, so almost another thousand. Because I'll just tell you, I was at the site today, and I was like, oh my God, look at this thing. I mean, it's, it has, it has a very big presence on the street, and there's nothing else that's like it.
Right, right.
And I don't even know why a deck up there is needed to be looking down over the street. And so I was reading this at first to say that maybe it had a smaller deck.
Is it accurate to call it a deck? I mean, it's not a, is it a functional deck that is used for like entertaining?
Yes, so looking at, I'm looking at the, the drawing now, right?
Right.
So here's your garage that's pre-existing, it's in this cinder block pattern.
Yeah.
Okay, that's what was built in 1960 or so with the variance at the front property line.
Yeah.
So now we have this encroachment of this deck that's on top of it.
Yeah.
And this much railing.
Yeah.
And it goes all the way back to almost the far back of it because of how the pyramid line falls off the front of the property.
There's permit in the, from the front of the property as well.
So the 650 would be this.
Yeah.
The 1,500 would be this.
Okay, so that clarifies it then.
Correct.
Then what we were talking about as the existing and proposed being maybe a mistake, but now it seems like the existing was the garage, and now we're talking about adding on the deck.
A deck.
When was the deck built?
That's what we don't know.
We don't know that at all.
That's what I'm saying, because it's like, it showed up in the aerial photographs as far back as I could see until it blurs out.
When was that? How far back did it go, as far as you could say?
Eighties.
Did you hand out those photos of the property?
Yeah, they're attached to the packet.
They're in your packet that she just handed us.
There's a packet with the, it starts with a zoning board decision.
Yeah, but the pictures are.
They're not at mine, and I have to.
No, I don't have any.
They are.
They should be.
No?
Here, you can look at this one.
Page number.
They're not in my, maybe they should have been, but they're not.
I don't have a meeting.
I, I find this, I find this, I was really kind of put, put back when I saw this today, and I'm not in favor of approving that deck, is what I'll just say to you now. So, I don't know what your options are, but I, as one vote, am not in favor of approving that deck. The garage is enough. If you would like to have a deck that goes back further on the property closer to, closer to the house, but, I mean, it looks like a boat in port, you know?
Well, I think maybe what we need would be some information about what it would cost to remove the deck, and.
But then we're left with a flat roof.
Which you can put a railing across the, if you look at it, if you look at the.
Why do people have to walk on it?
Survey. They don't have to walk on it. You could put a, you could put a railing on the far.
A railing at the end of it, yeah.
On the part that's closest to the house.
Right.
So nobody walks onto that roof.
Correct, correct. Or, or, you know, perhaps even a smaller deck that did not.
And then that would reduce the amount of pyramid relief you're looking for, it's a 630 cubic feet.
Correct, but it's just, it's a lot. I don't have as much issues with the rest of your application regarding, you know, the, the addition.
On the house.
On the house and things like that.
Mm-hmm.
But this to, this is just, this is a lot. And there's nothing else like it on that street, and I.
No, it's very unique.
It is unique, and I couldn't support approving that deck, me personally.
All right, so what I'm hearing is, well, first, if we're going to get a cost to remove the deck, we should also include the cost of what it costs them to rebuild the deck. So that's two things of a factor in.
Well, they built it without permit.
Without a permit, so that's not really of our concern.
All right, so just the cost to remove the deck.
Cost to remove it.
Or to pull it back and make a smaller deck.
No, no smaller deck. Pulling back the railing to the far, so what we're suggesting is pulling the railing back to here, so nobody walks onto it. It would enclose that space.
Is that flush with the, with the ground?
No, no.
It's.
It's built right into the hill.
You'll see how it's built into the hill.
No, I understand, but when you go closer to the house, does it level out with the land?
Yes.
John, I did mention or a smaller deck as a, as an option for them to present.
Look at my, look at the grade.
But something that would not, would not pierce the pyramid.
Oh.
Something that would not pierce the pyramid.
Well, absolutely, so then it, they can decide whether they need to come back for relief.
It would be less relief, so probably.
Yeah, I mean, if you look where the pyramid runs on there, it runs in like five, six, seven rungs or what have you.
Mm-hmm.
I mean, if they need to have something for safety there, but I just don't, don't see that deck as being appropriate.
The deck, but, so if we move the railing back, would the deck still be a rather to you? The deck itself?
You can't have the deck down.
Only if people went on it.
No, but you're going to put a barrier, we're going to move the railing.
If you move the entire deck within the pyramid?
Mm-hmm. That's going to be very expensive.
Then you're fine, then you don't need any relief with regard to the deck.
Correct.
Then you would only be asking for the 630 for the garage.
We don't need, we don't need relief for the garage. The garage is pre-existing.
I mean, if a deck is there.
It's 50, it's variance from 19, nothing for that.
The answer, I mean, the question is, if a deck is there, can, you know, can you assume that it's not going to be used?
Well, then you wouldn't need any relief at all.
Yeah, but it's still, it's still actually part of the structure that is requiring pyramid relief.
Correct.
So, in essence, you know, how could you have a deck and then not be tempted to or, or use it, so?
But if the railing was pulled back, that would be less towering.
It would.
But it'd be less, we, we wouldn't have to remove the deck per se, because that's very expensive, but we'd be prohibiting access to it.
It would.
So.
And reducing the pyramid relief.
The two options sounded that Mike and John were suggesting, one is pull the railing all the way back.
Yep.
And the other was make it a smaller deck and pull it back and reduce your pyramid. Now, even, even with the flooring of the, the deck, whether we call it a deck or it's like an additional part to the roof.
Mm-hmm.
There would be pyramid relief, probably additional, from the 650.
There's no 650s out of the, out of the picture.
All right, well, but, but we'd have to look at what the.
The garage only.
So if you just took, yeah, if you just, if you're not, see, they're not going to take off unless we remove it. I guess that's what they're asking also, is the cost of removal.
I'm going to get that, I got that.
My recommendation would be to remove the entire structure of the deck, but they, you know, Lori can come back with whatever she wants.
Sure.
We've got several things to investigate here.
Okay, so let's go through.
Moving railing, cost to remove deck, pull deck back, smaller deck that does not pierce pyramid, or build the barrier further back.
I mean, I'm, I'm also not sure what the necessity of that deck is, considering there's so much other outdoor space with attendant to this property. So it would seem to me the best option that I would like to see is to remove the deck altogether, pull back the railing into, within the pyramid, and then you can just get rid of that entire line of relief.
Mm-hmm, mm-hmm.
Right.
Okay, well, I have not seen the property, so I'm not reacting to it the same way that Michael is, so I want to see what you come back with.
Of course.
Before I make a decision.
Sure, understood. We have a little bit more research to do, we can get to you.
Do you want to talk about the other parts of your request, or did we already?
Well, the one is having a deck that's more than one foot above grade in the front yard.
At the front of the house.
Does that, does that mean the deck that's on the garage?
Correct.
It doesn't mean the deck that's attached to the.
No, it's the, is it the proposed deck at the front of the house?
Yeah, well, that's what I was asking before.
Oh, I don't agree with that proposed deck, because that's very interesting.
Yeah, so that's my question on that, is.
Yeah, because you have a proposed deck in the front of the house as well.
Right, see, that's the one I thought was supposed to be.
I thought that's the one.
It's in the front and it's probably higher than.
And then my question is, how many feet higher is it?
I see, that makes sense. I see, that makes sense.
And then you have a proposed one-story addition in the back and then you wanna put a, another half a floor on the top of the existing house. Is that correct?
Correct.
So.
And then we have a parking issue.
Then you have a parking.
Which really can't resolve, be resolved without a variance.
Well, and, and unfortunately, the way that you described the topography goes off. So it's not like, you know, you can pull the car next to the garage or there's a parking area or anything like that.
Right, if you can see that photo, you see that there's just like a gravel area for one or.
It's actually, if you look at the survey.
How many cars can fit there?
Three or four, easily.
But it's, but it's not their property. It's the right of way.
It's in the right of way.
So I think if we, we should, we grant the variance of one parking. We can't accept that it's, you know, gonna be met because it's in the, it's in the right of way. So I, I would say that we go with the one parking.
Well, how much of it is in the right of way?
All of it. This is right to the front line.
Oh, okay.
So the whole thing is, is right of way.
Oh, that's true. That's right.
So my recommendation would be to go with approving one parking space for the garage. And because I don't think that we should, we can't approve more because there's no existence.
Or the request is for two?
No, one.
The request is for one.
The request is to allow one where three are required.
Right, so.
So it's a reduction of two.
That's right.
We would be allowing a reduction of two.
Right, right.
Right.
And I just don't see how you can accommodate two spaces. That doesn't take, take up the right of way. So I'm not opposed to that.
Okay, so that's a check and the rest I have to get back to you on.
But yes, so you have to identify the deck we're talking about and how high it is.
Yep. Yep.
Okay, and.
We need to know how, oh, whether it's the proposed deck at the front of the building?
Yep.
Yes, that's what I just said, yeah.
And how high off the ground it's going to be?
Yes, how far above one feet.
And then is there anything we wanna know about, about the pyramid relief request for the main house or the second story addition?
I have no problem with that.
I have no problem with that either, I don't think.
What about you, Keith?
I don't have, well, you don't have a problem with it?
No.
And.
I'm with my colleagues.
Have you, has anyone spoken to the neighbors?
No.
So we're not sure how they?
I've not heard from anybody.
Okay.
We sent it out with our letterhead and no one called.
Okay, is anybody else from the board, Helen, anybody from the board like to comment? Is there, is there anyone in the audience who would like to comment about the application of Cassidy at 41 Licketuck Drive? Is there anyone on Zoom who would like to comment on this application? Michael?
Okay, so when would you like to come back? It's holidays, you have some work to do.
Yes, the architect's away. I can't get an answer on the, which deck and how high.
So are meeting dates that, the next meeting date that seems most reasonable is what?
I think the 18th.
Do you wanna go to, you wanna go to February 1st?
No, they're anxious to get this done, so I'm sure they can get a cost estimate right away.
So January 18th?
That's really the main thing.
We have room for that, yeah. Okay, so we'll keep this open.
Yep.
We'll see you back here on January 18th.
With answers, thank you.
Okay, thank you very much.
And happy holidays.
Mr. Tuthill.
Thanks for waiting, Lori.
I mean, Mr. 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 Daly.
That's fine, aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Have a happy holiday and a happy new year.
You too.
Have a nice party.
If you, if you'd like to submit something, you know, as a written submission in the meantime, so we have it before the next meeting, you're welcome to do that as well.
That would be helpful.
That would be really helpful.
Yeah, so I'm gonna get you answers, the cost estimate, et cetera.
Thanks, Lori.
Yes.
Okay.
Nope, we gotta read the whole thing.
Item two on the agenda is Henry Toboda, 33A Seabreeze Avenue in West Hampton. Suffolk County Tax Map 900-354-4395. Applicant seeks relief from the following provisions of Town Code. To legalize the existing deck constructed on the south side of the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit on a nonconforming lot. 330-11 Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations. For an accessory side yard setback of 5 feet 4 inches where 10 feet is required. And two, 330-7060 placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts. And 330-83C yards to allow the deck to remain within the required minimum and the total side yard for the principal building. Two, legalize an accessory apartment constructed within the dwelling without the benefit of a building permit. 330-11.2F Special Standards for the following. A to, a total lot area of 20,005.65 square feet where a minimum of 32,000 square feet is required. Two for a lot width of 98.24 feet where a minimum of 105 feet is required, 70% of the required 150 feet. And three for the existing deck, an accessory side yard setback of 5.4 feet where 14 feet is required. 70% of the required 20 feet and any other relief necessary.
Board has jurisdiction?
You guys have been busy, huh?
No.
Wait, wait, let me swear you in.
Yeah.
Are you attorneys?
No.
Okay, can you raise your, you promise to tell the truth, the whole truth and nothing but the truth?
Yes.
And would you please state your name and your addresses?
Henry Toboda, 33A Seabreeze Avenue, West Hampton.
Rachel Toboda, 33A Seabreeze Avenue, West Hampton.
Okay, I know, sorry for the delay tonight, but, so tell us about your application.
So we purchased the home in May of 2021. And it was family friend. He passed away. Family owns the house. They wanna sell it. They approached us. We agreed to buy it. We had been renting it for about 10 years. And so we, after purchasing it, come to find out that these things are not in order as we thought they were. So here we are trying to legalize everything that we purchased in 2021. So we have, we have a building permit currently in place because of the, there was the percentage of habitable space between the apartment and the main dwelling.
And do you know what those percentages are?
I know we didn't meet them. And then we finished the basement, got a permit, finished the basement, so the habitable space on the main side is now better. It's in, it's in the, it's in.
It complies.
It complies, yeah.
It complies with the 35%?
Yes, yes, absolutely.
Okay, good.
Yeah.
I think it was previously 33, 33%.
Yeah, it was like 33, so now.
And you added some habitable space so that you now meet the, the standard, right?
So can I ask a question?
Hmm?
I, I was a little confused as to what's the accessory apartment, what?
Okay, yeah, so it's not like a two-story house. It's a split level, so it's like only two steps down.
That's the whole back of the house.
Yeah.
It's the whole top, this.
I can, let me see.
Okay, so.
See, it's this, see, this.
Well, let him, he's the, he's the applicant, he's the witness. He should testify as to it. So where is the habitable, where is the accessory apartment?
Okay.
On your.
This.
Is it?
So this plan does not, it's basically, it's basically this.
Okay, so it's.
So, so, so this is, yes, exactly. This is it here. This is the bedroom, the bathroom.
So it's a one-bedroom with a kitchen and a family room?
Exactly. It's, it's the back of the house, yep. So here's, here's where the, where the steps are. From, from this wall, this, everything forward is the main part of the house. Everything in the back is, is the, is the apartment.
Okay, and this is on the first level and this is the second level?
Correct.
Okay, thank you.
Yep, no problem. And when was that accessory apartment created?
Back when the house was built in 1985.
Yep.
Because the owner built that house with that apartment for his handicapped daughter. And that the front part would provide rent or an income for her. So she lived in the back part and then they rented the main front house for her to have income. But then as time went on, she didn't want to live there anymore. So then, you know, over years and years, he just rented, but then.
Both.
Yeah, both. And then we came along in 2011 and we started renting the whole house. Cause we said we want the whole house. We don't want renters, you know, and separate. And we had our family and we needed the whole house.
Yeah.
So our daughter and her husband live in that apartment and we live up in the front camp.
In the main side, yeah.
So it's just, we're all family.
That's your primary residence.
Oh, yeah. It's our only residence.
Hey, um, I, I had a couple of questions. I was a little confused on the side yard setback and what the standard was that we were looking at. This is an R40 zoning, correct? That's what the application says, it's R40.
It's possible, yeah.
And I understand that the setback R40, side yard setback is 20 feet. So I'm, I'm a little confused on number one, where you say for an accessory side yard setback of 5.5 feet 4 inches where 10 feet is required. Am I misunderstanding? I see, I see where it is, but I'm just asking.
Or is that a house?
What the sta, what your standard is. I mean, if we're gonna grant a variance, we have to be accurate in terms of what we're granting the variance from.
Okay.
And I'm confused as to whether it's 10 feet or 20 feet. And then at the end, you talk about 5, 5 feet 4 inches where 14 feet is required.
Well, it says that the building department notes say that it was, property was part of a filed map entitled to R20 zoning setbacks.
Okay, okay, so that's the.
Yeah.
Okay, so that's a 10 feet. Okay, good.
That's right, that's a 10 feet.
All right, good.
That's what I said.
Good, I'm glad you clarified that, thank you.
So is that a, that's a wood deck that is not, that does not have an interior?
Okay.
No, it's a.
It's wood frame.
Yeah. And it's been there that whole time, so there are 35 years or 30.
So your application is really, you just wanna clear things up and get it correct.
Exactly, yeah.
Right, we just wanna legalize.
Have you spoken to your neighbor to the southeast, have you? On the lot line where the deck would be?
The West Hampton Beach Fire Department.
Oh, is that what, is that what it is? I don't know.
Yeah, it's just the substation.
Yeah.
You're the flag lot right behind. You're not the front house. You're A, which is the behind lot.
Right.
And this wood deck has been there for?
The whole time, 30, since 1985.
And there, I know that the building department did have a comment about removing the shed or putting it to a conforming location.
Conforming location. I, I, we did.
Oh, you did?
I moved it. I dragged it to the 10 feet, 10 feet off the, off the property line.
All right, so it's not shown on the survey, that's the only.
Yeah, cause I, I just did it knowing we were coming here, so I just wanted to do it. But I know we're gonna have to get, you know, new surveys. A new survey showing where it is located. Yep.
Okay, that sounds good.
Yeah, we didn't know if there'd be other things to have to show on the survey, so we said, oh, this week.
Yeah, yeah, makes sense. Don't do it, you know.
Give us a few minutes, we'll find something.
Actually, I, I really have no problem with this application. I think you're doing the right thing by trying to legalize everything and get it in order.
Right.
You know, so I.
Thank you.
I have no problem with it.
And there's no issue with the, with the percentage, correct?
No, apparently not.
Cause they're under.
They've met, they've met the percentage.
That begs a little bit of a question. So the building permit for the basement, which helped the percentage for the apartment. Now, the apartment, from what I understand, is if we're granted, you know.
Legalize it.
To legalize it, then I have to apply for a building permit for it.
Yes.
So then when I apply for the building permit, cause we still have an open permit. So do I need to renew the open permit? Well, it did. It expired. It expired in, in, in December.
What was the old open permit for?
It was for the basement.
It was for the basement.
For the basement, is the basement done?
And, and it's done and it's, all the inspections are done. The only thing is it's open because they said we still need an answer from ZBA.
That's gonna be a question put upon the project. We can actually tell the jury about that.
Okay.
More drill more.
It's like, it's kinda like one of these.
I'm not familiar with it.
They may reopen it just for the purposes of closing it.
No, you, you, it's not like you're gonna have to probably renew that one, apply to the other one and then you close them all at the same time.
And then close them all at the same time.
That's what it sounds like, but we have to check if the building department confirmed.
Okay, all right.
And then do you already, do you have somebody living in there?
Yeah, a daughter.
Their daughter and.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, so it's all family.
Okay, so it's family, perfect.
Okay, so any other questions from board members?
No.
Not gonna.
Is there anyone in the audience who wishes to be heard on the application of?
Toboda.
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 Of 33A Seabreeze Avenue. Is there anybody on Zoom who wishes to be heard on this application? Okay, hearing none. Bob is not here, so I'm going to take this and I'm gonna say that we're gonna keep this open for written comments. We're gonna close the public hearing, keep it open for written comments, which probably includes modifying the survey. And written comments will be due on January 5th?
Yes.
Get it by then?
To get a new survey?
Would you be able to get the survey done by January 5th?
Probably not, no.
Okay.
Not with the holidays. So we should extend that a little bit.
Okay, so, uh.
About the 19th?
About the 19th and then come back on, or submit it by the 19th with a decision on February 1st.
Okay. And if you can't submit it by the 19th, we just probably won't have your decision on February 1st. It'll be put off another, another minute.
Second.
All right, so let me just get that written by January 19th and a decision February 1st.
Do we need, excuse me, do we also need them to give the percentage of what the square footage is now of the accessory versus the square footage of the whole house?
I would like that, just a confirmation, if you could do the habitable space for the main.
I mean, it, it complies. The building department hasn't.
Building department hasn't raised it with us, so therefore we don't have to ask.
Yeah, I mean, I.
Okay. It, it was the whole reason we finished the basement.
Yeah, no, I, okay, so you don't have to worry about that.
So that we did comply.
But you do need to submit a survey about the shed.
That's right, it would have been mentioned before.
Okay, thank you. Right, so that's the written part. That, we just need to get the survey with the.
That's all. You don't have to come back.
Okay.
A secondary motion.
I reseconded it.
He's thirding it.
I'm thirding it.
I'm sorry, what was that?
The whole damn board.
Yes.
Thank you. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, and Mr. Who, who did the?
I second it.
No, wait, all right.
You moved, I second it.
Okay, Mr. Leonard.
Thank you so much.
Thank you.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Happy holidays.
Mr. Daly. Mr. Daley.
Thank you.
Ms. Burgess.
Safe travel.
Chair votes aye, okay. All right, so we're off to decisions, so let me get out the decisions.
Which one, which decision are you waiting on?
Goldsmith.
Goldsmith, oh, that's the first one.
We have six decisions tonight, so the first one is Goldsmith. So I have a decision in the matter of Florence Goldsmith, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-222-4-1.3. This application is for property located at 5 Wurtemeer Close, Hampton Bays. Applicant requests side yard setback variances for proposed additions to an existing dwelling. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, and for the aforementioned reasons, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-11, Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations, for a principal total side yard setback of 39.8 feet where 60 feet is required, and a principal minimal, minimum side yard setback of 12.6 feet where 20 feet is required for an attached garage, an attached gazebo, and a living area addition to an existing dwelling, as shown on the survey prepared by Frank Aluso, LS of Empire State Surveying PC, last dated December 7, 2023, and the plans and elevations prepared by Paul J. Clinton RA, digitally signed June 27, 2023, and last revised June 30, 2023. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of the subject premises, including the removal or conforming relocation of the shed prior to the issuance of any certificates.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Okay, can we just take a sip of water, please? We've got five more. Thank you very much for being here and just been waiting. Okay, I have a decision in the matter of Diane and Edwin Schottenstein, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-370-1-16. This application is for property located at 27 Meeting House Road, Pialt. Applicant requests variances for a proposed addition to an existing dwelling on a narrow, non-conforming lot. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from the following provisions of the Town Code for a proposed addition to an existing dwelling. One, Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Height, for an encroachment in the amount of 83.25 cubic feet, and two, Town Code Section 330-11, Residence District Table of Dimensional Regulations, for a principal front yard setback of 39.5 feet where 40 feet is required, a minimum side yard setback of 15.2 feet where 20 feet is required, and a total side yard setback of 38.7 feet where 45 feet is required. This board also grants relief from Town Code Section 330-11 for a principal front yard setback of 39.7 feet where 40 feet is required for a proposed entry addition. These variances are granted as shown on the survey prepared by Pat T. Secafio, Secafio, I don't know how to pronounce that quickly. Land Surveying PC, last dated update, last updated November 27, 2023, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Edward Eric Konig of Carmel Hill Architects, last revised May 30, 2023. Grant of the foregoing is subject to such other conditions and permits as applicant has already acquired and may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I have a decision in the matter of Susan and James Merrill, Suffolk County Tax Map This application is for property located at 31 Carlisle Lane, Sac Harbor. Applicant requests variances for a proposed detached garage on a non-conforming lot. This application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and Town, and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-706D, placement of accessory building structures and uses in all districts, and Town Code Section 330-83C yards to allow a proposed detached garage to be located within the required minimum and total side yard for the principal building, as shown on the survey prepared by John F. Broliski, LS of Broliski Land Surveying, last revised October 4, 2022, and the garage plans and elevations prepared by James S. Merrill RA, dated June 26, 2023. This decision is subject to such other conditions and permits its application has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises, including addressing the overclearing of the lot and the removal of conforming, the removal or conforming relocation of the shed prior to the issuance of any certificates for the proposed garage.
Second.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. I have a decision in the matter of Stephen and Melissa Lesser, Suffolk County, Suffolk County Tax Map 900-4-1-75.1. This application is for property located at 62 Noyah Harbor Road, Noyah. Applicant requests variance for a proposed one-family dwelling and detached garage on a non-conforming lot burdened by wetlands. After several modifications, the applicants reduced the pyramid encroachment on the proposed house and eliminated encroachment on the garage. As such, this application passes the standard set forth in New York State Town Law and the Town Code. Therefore, this board grants relief from Town Code Section 330-84D Pyramid Height, for an encroachment in the amount of 3,972 cubic feet, and Town Code Section 330-115, continuance, for a total side yard setback of 21 feet where 27.2 feet is required for a proposed one-family dwelling, as shown on the survey prepared by John F. Broliski of Broliski, am I saying it right?
Broliski.
Broliski, Land, Land Surveying, last dated February 15, 2023, and the floor plans and elevations prepared by Architect Salvador Cicirelli Jr., last dated October 30, 2023. Grant of the foregoing is subject to such other conditions and permits its applicant has already acquired or may otherwise have to acquire for final approval of subject premises.
Second.
Mr. Leonard.
Aye.
Mr. Tuthill.
Aye.
Mr. Daley.
Aye.
Ms. Burgess.
Aye.
Chair votes aye. Two more. I have a, a decision in the matter of Joseph Alioso, Alioso, I might pronounce that wrong, okay. Suffolk County Tax Map 900-64-1-46.3. This application is for property located at 219 Ocean View Parkway, North Sea. Applicant requests variances for a proposed accessory apartment and an interpretation with respect to the size of a proposed accessory building.